Welcome to the open session. We're just returning from an executive session, but welcome to the February 8th meeting of Plumpton Board of Selectmen. Just a reminder that pursuant to Governor Baker's orders concerning COVID, there are severe limitations on the number of people that can meet in one place and that this meeting is being conducted by remote participation. Information on how to join the meeting either by video or by audio is on the town website. We are recording, yes, we are, and the recording is not to be considered an official public document. So I think we are all here. Welcome, everyone. Sorry, we're a little late in getting going. And unexpectedly, the executive session took a little longer than we might have expected. So we welcome Rich Goulart, who's the Executive Director of Area 58. Thank you so much, Rich, for coming in. This is particularly opportune because we invited you in part because of an ongoing program that we've started of inviting department heads and chairs and other leaders we deal with on a regular basis into our meetings. A chance for some FaceTime and a chance for sort of a periodic update. All the more opportune that you're here because the Tri-Town intermunicipal agreement that we signed five years ago that actually created the Tri-Town Studio is up for renewal, and I think you were asking for an opportunity to present to the selectmen. So we're really glad you're here. Kind of by way of introduction, I am Plumpton's representative on the Area 58 Board of Directors. I was very involved when we put the Tri-Town Studio together five years ago, both in the negotiation to put that together and our negotiation with Comcast, which became the funding source for all of this. It was a whole bunch of work to put it all together. And frankly, I have said in the past and continue to say that I feel like Area 58 as a shared service thing of three towns has been a really significant success and a good model on lots of other work that could be done. It turned out to be a particular success because I think the three towns got along with each other, trusted each other, and just there was a real sense of intermunicipal cooperation. I well-recognized there have been some operational hiccups along the way. It's kind of a tough operation to run this. There are a lot of moving parts, and I know there have been some concerns about some operational hiccups, and we're glad to talk about those tonight. Nevertheless, I don't think some glitches and a few stumbles along the way should get in the way of understanding the economy of scale and the non-duplication of services that we're able to do with Area 58. So with all that in mind, just really glad to have Rich here and a chance for him to present to us where we're at and what we need to know about renewing the intermunicipal agreement. Lastly, I'll say, Rich may touch upon it, cable access is just a constantly and a rapidly evolving field. And I think we are well aware, the Board of Directors of Area 58, that this whole thing keeps changing. COVID made it all the more clear how quickly it was going to change with new technology. We fully recognize this will probably look terribly totally different in five years. So that's a long preamble. I'm going to turn it over for Rich, and then there'll be a chance for questions or comments. Thanks for being here.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you for having me, all of you. So we signed the agreement September 22nd, 2015, so typically it expired on September 22nd of 2020. I've seen the Halifax Selectmen. I'm still waiting to see actually appear before the Carver Selectmen. We are looking at the same agreement that we had previously, and KMP Law is reviewing it in Carver. So whether or not you guys would have want additional people to look at, it's another issue. But I think they're looking to see if there's any necessary language to be changed or anything like that. So far, it has worked pretty well. I mean, certainly COVID threw everything up in the air, and how do we do this? And how do we make all this happen? It certainly gave us less direct communication with a number of people. And obviously, we haven't seen you guys in person other than town meetings since early last March, I believe. The other two towns on occasion are running live meetings, depending on which ones they are. But more and more relying more heavily, I believe, on a lot of the Zoom-type stuff or the Google meets. We've had some issue getting meetings from the Silver Lake Schools, which is related to some significant delays on posting those to the website and also to the channel. We also have, I spoke to the web host today, they've been moving things over and moving things around to a new server, and during that time, it's caused some hiccups in the website availability. So it's been timing out and having a couple of things, but he assures me, well, he suggests at least, I think he's assuring me, but that the move should make it more stable, and that's we're in the process of, or he's in the process of doing that. And I think he's got us moved over as of today completely. We are currently located at 96 North Main Street in Carver. It's in the Plaza with Honeydew Donuts and Cornerstones. We're still actually looking for a possible another location. Our hope is to move closer towards Plumpton and Halifax. And if there's anything anyone knows that's sitting around that would love to have us, we'd certainly like it. Hoping to potentially cut down on the cost that we're currently paying for the location, which would give us a lot more resources to use otherwise. Let me see. One other aspect here is Carver is in the middle of their negotiations with Comcast. It just so happens that their contract ends up being about midway point through Halifax and Plumpton's. So we are about to be finishing up with that. If things go through with their selectmen, they accept it, we're going to be going from 4.5% in Carver to 5% and going from never having received capital monies to receiving $200,000 over the 10-year period. I think that we're, oh, and the other one thing we'll be getting from there is a one HD channel, which right now appears to be the maximum they are giving any town. We do have a side letter in place that should it become commonplace for towns to receive more than a single channel, that they will at that point open it up to give us additional ones. And so when we're looking at renewing the contracts with either Halifax or Plumpton with Comcast, because it looks like they're the only game in town, and I can speak more to that if anyone's interested, it looks like they're going to be willing to surrender an additional channel for each town when it comes to that in HD. Basically, that'll make what's presented on the channel a lot better quality and also afford us the ability to beat the higher numbers where we could end up surfing around now rather than down in the low tunes. I think that's everything I need to say at the moment. I guess, other than one other thing, substantively, we don't intend to change the agreement in any significant way. Again, I think it's going to be more a change of a little bit of language here and there if there's any changes that need to be made to update things or anything. The one other thing we probably need to do is potentially address COVID within there in some way. Certainly, we're going to be doing that. We're updating our personnel, our HR booklet, and that's going to be one of the things we're going to add into that. And now I think I can shut up.
Richard, I missed one or two things. The 5%, what was that?
Carver will be going from 4.5% to 5%.
What does that mean?
It means that's the amount charged from Comcast off of the bills.
Oh, okay.
So we'll go from the percentage, I think, is Plumpton, I believe, is it 4%?
4.5.
4.5, okay. And Halifax has been 5% since 2015, so.
And the $200,000 over 10 years, that's coming from who?
That is also, it's a pass-through. It's an additional fee that they put upon the subscribers, and that ends up coming back and gives us capital money to work on. It's restricted funds, but it gives us the one guaranteed amount that we'd have because obviously 5% of nothing is considerably less than 2% of a larger number. So we're kind of, it's the one number we can count on is anything we're receiving from capital from the towns.
I have a couple of questions.
Sorry, John, just one sec. Could 585-4477 mute themselves, please? And actually, and who are you?
It's Colleen Mark. How do I mute?
Oh, I can see if there's a way that we can do it.
Mute everybody and we'll come back on.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. John, I guess you had more questions, please.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. The upgrade that's going on, are we buying service or are we going to the cloud? How is that working?
Oh, it's just an upgrade in the actual server that we're, that Area 58 is housed on. So it's basically the computer that controls everything for us and then sends us back out in the cloud. Basically, our brain and storage is going to be, for the actual website, is being upgraded so that it should be more resilient and less problematic.
Okay. I did try to go on over the weekend, and I couldn't get in, and that explains some of it. There's two things I would like. One is, actually, three points. One is, I haven't seen the school committee Zoom meetings being put up there. And I assume you're receiving them, right?
We have not been very regularly. Occasionally, they'll send us two or three together. We continue to request them, and we're having problems finding out exactly who we should speak to. When we speak to someone, they say they'll deal with it, and we're not getting them regularly. I'm going, I have put out feelers to see if they want us to either host them or if we can actually jump on and record them ourselves when the meetings take place, because that will solve that issue. Because, yeah, we are very aware that they're not going up as frequently as we'd like or as currently, and that's become an issue for us as well.
Should be caught up on Plumpton's. So, you know, we only typically have the meetings every, well, six, only every six weeks in the fall. They're being monthly now through April, and you should have, you should be completely caught up there, and we'll have a meeting again on the 25th.
So they have been sent forward to us?
Yep. No, they were, they were sent a couple of weeks ago. So you should be, you should be, you should have everything on your end for Plumpton. I can't speak to Halifax or Silver Lake, but.
Okay. Yeah, I will review that and see if that got lost in the shuffle. It's possible. There were only a couple of them then, probably, right?
Yeah, we were, we were caught up through November, and then we had the December one and then the January one. And then if you have any questions for Plumpton School Committee, that's, that's me. I'm the one who's recording those. But right now, it's a highly sought-after, exciting meeting, so you will be getting them from me the night that they, the night that they are recorded.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we might underscore that. That's kind of a hot area right now, and people are interested in. So it'd be good to be right on top of that.
Now, are you, are you using a large meeting feed as well at this point? Or do you normally have fewer than 100 people, or do you have the ability to have more people than that on your Zoom?
I have a, I have a full professional Zoom account, so I have not had an issue yet where we have been over capacity or anything like that.
Okay.
And then recording uploading to you, and once I see it up, then I get rid of the meeting on my end.
All right. Thank you.
So while we have Rich here, if we had a magic wand and he had the ability, are there other things that we'd like to see him working on or that could be improved?
Two things. One is, Richard, we talked about having a live meeting, so we could present our, say, our selectmen's meetings live?
Yes. Yeah. We, if we're, two things. It's the easiest way is if we're Zooming, we can definitely do them live. You just need to have us be the host.
So you can, so they would, they would be live? Can we put them on TV?
Yep. Yeah, they'll go to live both to Zoom and to the, to the, to the channel at the same time.
So if we logged in, we would just make you a co-host?
We have to be the actual host. We have to be the host, and we can make you the co-host. In order to work with the playback system, we have to be the initial host.
Okay, so that would work, then it sounds like on some open meeting days. But if we were coming from an executive session, I think it would be hard for them to know when.
The best way of doing that would probably be to hold an executive session as one link and the public session as a separate one.
Okay, that's how we've been setting it up, so maybe it would work.
Yeah.
If you could do them live, then that's going to give us a lot more outreach.
Yep, and we've, we're working as well on figuring out if we ever get beyond the virus thing or when, how we can possibly go live from the selectman meeting room as well.
The other one thing.
I think we lost, yeah, we lost John. Well, while we're waiting for him. My only concern about having Rich be the, in charge of the meeting is, God forbid, things get a little testy. Sometimes we have to get people under control, and I don't think that would be as easy for us to do if something bad happened and you needed to mute somebody because they were being inappropriate.
That's correct.
I believe, couldn't co-hosts have that ability?
Yeah, I think the co-host can go ahead.
I believe that's capable.
The only other concern I would have, but maybe it's not really a concern, would be, so you would log into our Zoom account just for the purpose of hosting the BOX meetings?
No, you'd actually, we would be using our Zoom account.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is there any issue as far as getting like the link from you and the meeting ID and everything and the timing? Sometimes we post meeting agendas like we're right at the 48 hours.
Yeah, as soon as you want it, you just get in touch with me, and I'll have it up within seconds.
Oh, all right. I, okay. Sounds like something worth exploring, then. So it would be via your Zoom account.
Yep.
Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can now, John.
Okay, thank you. How much space do you need if you were to move?
We currently have about 3,000 square feet.
And how much would you want?
Something in the same realm, if possible. We certainly could figure out doing less, but to have the good actual in-studio, you know, the actual physical studio space for the studio, we do need considerable space for that alone.
Okay. I'll talk to you about the measurements after. I'll just, we can talk about that separate.
Okay.
So, Rich, if you were to host the meetings, could we have it that it's the same address every time, just so it's easier for?
Absolutely. I can do it and make sure that's the same thing. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, we've been doing that for several meetings in Carver from the outset.
Okay.
And we're actually working on something now where we're going to both be in the room and Zooming for Carver, which we're not sure exactly how that's going to come off, but it's our first try on doing that. And we're in the, just got into the loop to do live basketball games, actually, from the high school. So we've been doing a few of those, but it's, it's a different world.
This could be a big reach for us. It could be great. We have lots of seniors.
Especially with the fact that Plumpton doesn't have any actual old-school live drops and won't be getting any from Comcast. They're just not going to do it. So your ability to go live has now expanded exponentially. Well, I guess it would expand even beyond that, since you had zero before, and now you have an opportunity. That's different. But yeah, there's, there's actually, the technology has increased, and the ability to make this happen is more and more out there. We're actually looking, one of the other things we're looking into for additional equipment is mobile hotspots, which would allow us basically to go live from anywhere using our equipment. So that's, that's a big deal. Right now, we can pretty much go live from anywhere. We can get a dedicated IP address to allow us to hook into the internet and have a clean signal. We ran into one problem early on or mid-point in some of the streaming of the basketball games in Carver High School in that they were turning down the internet on the user, the guest one, the bandwidth. And because of that, we were getting really choppy things, but they've since whitelisted our computer, have us inside the system now and upgrade up to speed, and they've been looking perfectly. Also, by being in that, they allowed us to, instead of going standard deaf out to the internet, we're actually going full HD now, and they look beautiful. So that's a positive.
I'm excited about that.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities that all of this has afforded us. It's much like, that is similar in a lot of ways. It's much like when a nation goes to war and ends up, a lot of times, you end up learning things out of necessity or almost on the side, technology advances because of the necessity.
Nice. So, Rich, KMP is reviewing the intermunicipal agreement from Carver's perspective. So when they're done, of course, we'll want to see that. We probably would want another reading, just a quick reading. So we'll look forward to that. Any last comments or questions or suggestions directed toward Rich? Beautiful. Rich, we really appreciate your time. Any last words from you?
Yeah, we are, you know, we're dedicated to trying to do as much as we can for the towns. And so if there's any, ever anything you can come up with that you have ideas, please feel free to reach me. My, I don't know that I should get my cellphone out over the air for everyone, but I will, I'll definitely give it to Liz, and if anyone needs to call me, please do. I mean, I'm, I don't sleep very much. So I put it this way, I was on vacation in Hawaii, and Ron Clark, who's on the board, called me at what was Hawaii time, 3:00 in the morning, and I answered. But I think he didn't realize that was where I was somehow. But anyway, yeah, I, I, we are dedicated to what we can for the towns to, you know, to be a really useful and helpful asset to all three towns.
Just as a human interest, because Ron Clark, who was selectman in Carver for many, many years, has also for many years been chair of the Area 58 Board of Directors, and Rich and Ron together could be a comedy show along the way. In fact, there's an idea for more programming for you, Rich.
It would be interesting.
Okay, any last words, Rich?
No, I'm good. Thank you so much.
So, Rich, can I just ask one last question? So you're open to programming ideas? People that like to get on, because I know, well, Colony Planning Council is actually working with their local stations, and I think they're doing some broadcasting of meetings and informational opportunities. They do a lot of work with seniors, and I'll give them your contact information because there might be something that we can partner up with that to get some information about, about programs that are available for our seniors. Okay.
Yeah, we'd love to, in fact, work directly with the senior center. Are you guys with Halifax right now, or are you guys still trying to figure that out? I know senior centers always become.
We're just on our own. We don't have a senior center per se, but our aging is based in the townhouse. We partner with Halifax for the Meals on Wheels program.
All right. Yeah, so we're actually working with, one thing, Charlie Selig, the town administrator from Halifax, reached out to me and was doing a Halifax Open, Halifax is Open type of video, where they're going to local businesses and sort of just a short PSA to alert the town, you know, these businesses are open during this rough time, so people can remember to buy local, because I know a lot of the small businesses in towns just been destroyed and decimated by the restrictions necessary, though they may be. It's just simply something to remind people that if there's an opportunity to support those local businesses. So, yeah, anything we can do, working with the libraries, working in any way, we're always looking for local people also to come out and learn how to make their own television show, and any of their own interests can be brought up and be on there. And sometimes they're interesting, and sometimes they're very local. So thank you all for having me here tonight. And yes, please feel free to reach out to me if you have any concerns or any thoughts, any ideas. I'd always love to hear from anyone.
Great. Thank you, Rich, very much.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Just a reminder, Board of Selectmen, we do have an open position on the Area 58 Board of Directors. Karen Foye joined me for years, and as she's making a move, there is that open position if someone's interested in being part of that. All right, so moving onward, the next agenda item is acceptance of the change in dental benefits. So we're going to make a motion on that in a minute. Liz, do you want to introduce this or elaborate, please?
Sure. So in looking into what various towns do for the percentage paid for health insurance, it became evident that we were missing something as far as not offering dental insurance. And in talking to Mayflower Municipal Health Group, our umbrella provider, they mentioned that they do have dental options available, but they couldn't find any record from way back when of us ever adopting the specific provision of national law that would enable us to offer it to people. So I had spoken to town council, and at the same time, they talked with their council, and they came back and said, nope, it's just a simple majority vote of the Board of Selectmen, and you can begin offering that benefit. That said, it'll take them a few weeks, assuming if you do vote favorably tonight. It'll take them a bit, probably not until May 1st, when people could reasonably get on to it, just because it takes them a bit to get the paperwork over to us and everything else. But, yeah, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Questions about this? Christine, you're muted if.
There, I just tried to unmute myself. So, Liz, you can confirm that no town departments have been participating in a dental program so far?
Correct. Correct. Depending on what health insurance plan you have, there are a few that offer a very minimal dental benefit, like I think that they cover maybe one or two cleanings per year, but nothing else really beyond that. So I think it would be a nice offering for employees. And even potentially, we can kind of push off the discussion about changing our percentage, maybe, since that would come, obviously, at a significant cost. Maybe this would kind of hold things over for a while and, I don't know, just help us as far as expanding our portfolio of what we offer.
Can you touch on the expense, the additional expense to the town, Liz?
Sure. I believe that the cost for a family dental plan is around $120 a month. An individual is around $60 per month. We do carry some excess in that particular budget line to take into consideration new employees coming on board and that sort of thing. And then there's also the other side to that, which is not every employee who's on the insurance is going to want to opt in for dental because they're going to have to pay for 50% of it. But for some people who are interested, I think it would be a fantastic benefit to offer.
Yeah, I would just share, I, my experience with this has been the reverse, that occasionally in other sectors and other endeavors in my life, people have been very disappointed that there wasn't a dental plan. And so I think sometimes it's a pretty big draw, and it feels to me like this is a pretty, a nice benefit that some people really appreciate without a huge expense to the town. So I'm very much in favor of moving ahead with this.
I'm in favor too. Do we, is your sense, Liz, that we have enough money in that budget line to cover it for the rest of? I'm in favor too. Um do we, is your sense, Liz, that we have enough money in the um that budget line to cover it for the rest of this fiscal year?
I would believe so. Um the last time I talked to Mayflower, we did vote favorably. Realistically, it would probably take till May first for us on it. So that would just be a short time left in the fiscal year. Um and then give us a good idea too of enrollment so that we could better plan for next year. Um so yeah, I don't anticipate a problem as far as the end of this fiscal.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna make a motion and there can be more discussion if desired. I move that the board vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter thirty-two B, Section ten A, to provide dental benefits as part of group general or blanket insurance providing hospital, surgical, medical and other health insurance benefits for certain persons in the service of the town in Plumton. So that's the motion. Um do I hear a second?
I'll second and then I've got a question.
Okay, so then more discussions or questions?
So my question is, would this uh apply to retirees just like the other benefits do? Would they be eligible to?
I believe it would. Uh get clarification for the purpose of retirees, certainly.
Okay.
Oh, it would, it would.
It should be the same as, it should be the same as all the other plans that we offer.
Beautiful. Okay.
Doing.
Great.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Uh yes, Mark?
Yes.
Will you please send me what you just read? Um in an email?
Oh, I just made that. Yeah, I will send that absolutely.
I guess my only concern, I I'm gonna vote for this, but uh we we need to add these things up and make sure. I think you'll see a lot of retirees come into this.
All right, any further discussion? Uh uh so a roll call vote, Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Uh Mr. Trainer? Is that, is that, is that a nod? Yes, John Trainer?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, Mark Russo, yes. Okay, very good. We have a dental plan.
Yay.
Are we gonna have a selectman dental plan? My my um grinding of teeth, particularly after selectman meetings and necessitating dental implants is ridiculously expensive, but I guess that's a separate issue. Um all right, next agenda item, um a couple of appointments. Uh first of all, Benjamin Sorrow promoted to foreman. Um this is in the highway department uh and Patrick Coleman appointed to laborer also in the highway department. Are we putting a term on these, Liz?
Um these will be through June thirtieth of this year and then they'll be reappointed um as all the other employees are like.
So those appointments through June thirtieth of this year.
Can I second and then um ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll second. My question is um in the foreman's position, does um Mr. Sorrow meet all of the um the necessary criteria now or does he need to um do some training?
Nope, he has all of the requisite licenses and all of the requirements are met.
Beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion, questions, concerns? All right, roll call vote on this, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Uh Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Okay. Um next, uh another highway department item, which is the uh water emergency and and an update on mitigation of that. That'll be Liz.
So we had Rebuild X come out on site. And they are assessing the situation. They have to date removed um the affected ceiling tiles. They are going back there tomorrow at ten AM. Um and Bree is gonna meet them out there just to make sure that she has all the information she requires for the insurance claim. Um in a nutshell, they were unable to tarp the roof with it being a metal roof and also due to some repairs that had taken place there a few years back. So they had to fix the problem temporarily with use of a sealant. Um so that part's been done. So the problem's been band-aided temporarily. Um but it's a very loose band-aid at that. So we're very much looking forward to having that roof replacement project done um and that roofing insulation. Um I would say the biggest concerns right now and we'll know more tomorrow after Bree meets with the project manager from Rebuild X. But really, um is any of that insulation in the walls damaged? Do we need to look into that? Um so we should know more after tomorrow, but steps are being taken to mitigate the situation. Um I asked about the carpet being removed and apparently there's no padding on it. Um it's just on the concrete. So the carpet seems pretty well dry according to the highway superintendent. Um but we will have Rebuild X verify that so that we don't encounter a mold situation or anything like that. So um we're on it and Bridgette has already opened the claim and Bree has been tremendously helpful in this regard. So I just wanted to take a minute and recognize her, um not even just in this situation, but anytime we have a disaster at one of our buildings. I see you have some kind of nod and smiling. Um Bree has extensive experience in the insurance industry and she never ceases to amaze me. Time and time again, she steps up and helps us out with getting the claims processed and really just keeping everything on the right track. So I just want to thank her for that.
Right. Nice work, everyone. Sorry, we're having that problem. Any comments? Okay. So uh next is the acceptance of the registration of the town accountant effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Um and we received uh uh we received that resignation late last week. Um so are are we gonna just go ahead and vote to accept the resignation?
I would, I would recommend that we vote to accept the resignation. I mean.
You might say uh when the resignation is through, Mark.
Uh May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one for the town accountant. So I'll make a motion, we accept this resignation.
I'll second and it's with regret, but in tremendous appreciation of um Barbara's years of service to the town and she has been our financial rock that we've all leaned on and um she will definitely leave a void, but she's got um she needs to move on for personal reasons.
It's not gonna seem the same without Barbara chastising me at times.
Or no chocolate chip cookies at town meeting.
I know. Well, she got, I got oatmeal.
And I I I particularly appreciate, particularly way back when, my early years as a finance committee member and a selectman and not being that savvy. And I really appreciate her patience along the way. Kind of a stern look along the way, but always patient and always helpful. And yeah, she's been a rock in town government and uh she'll be missed. Um so uh I guess we need a roll call vote on accepting the resignation. So Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Uh Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right, and uh next is uh I'm gonna make, I am making a motion that we accept the resignation um of the notice of retirement of the treasurer collector effective June third of twenty twenty-one. So.
I'll second once again with um, you know, with regret of losing Colleen. She's been um great to work with and uh super source of information. Uh we've really uh worked to um, you know, get that department um streamlined and um and she's been instrumental in um in all of those efforts.
Yeah, I think the uh the the nice thing is the foundation has been laid by Barbara and Colleen. And it's always great when we know that things are running well and we can take off from there. So uh wish you, I wish you well, Colleen.
And I would underscore all those comments and also very appreciative for her patience and um of sharing of wisdom along the way and um and a and a quite ready smile, which was um uh very much appreciated. Um so again, a roll call vote, Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Um Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
And Mr. Russo, yes. Um so some significant changes and we're we're getting to work right away on searches and it's always a challenge to replace talented people. Also, though, an opportunity to um bring in some new people and new energy and new approaches. And so we're we're hopefully we'll get lucky and find um people equally as talented as the one they're replacing. So it's onward to the administrators update and the COVID nineteen update and then we'll call on um uh Mr. Wilhamsen for an uh an update on any of those things. But first, Liz.
Sure. So I've been plugging along with the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant. And we do have a public workshop that we're gonna be planning for um in the next month or so. Um for that one, I think we'll definitely want to take Rich up on his offer um to televising that live. Uh also recording that on Zoom so that we can play it back to people and um accomplish all the goals associated with the grant. So we're well underway to having our Hazard Mitigation Plan in hand. Um things smoothly with that project. We're looking into some different grant opportunities. Um the fire chief is specifically um interested in potentially pursuing um a grant to increase manpower. Um so lots of things happening in the grant world. Um unfortunately, for one of our larger projects that was programmed in for Green Communities funding. Um I received final confirmation today that we do need to go through procurement for that process. Um only green communities projects are energy related and they meet a certain exception under mass general law. Uh so you can just work with your energy consultant to find a vendor and do that. Um by going through procurement, it's just makes it a little more kind of left to chance if the project will come in um under or at the funding that that we've been allocated. So um I still think it's worthwhile to put the project out to bid and let's see how the numbers come in. Um if it's significantly higher than what they've allocated for us with green communities. You know, then I think we need to have a conversation with the Plumton School Committee folks and the school officials and figure out some of our priorities. And if um doing the boiler project is good, like no, we don't want to pass up the money that's on the table initially, or if it seems like something better left maybe for uh a future project down the line. Uh so more to come on that, but that that was a little unfortunate. I had hoped that there would be a way around it if you separated out the labor cost from the supply costs. Um but there's really not. So on we go. Um as far as COVID nineteen goes, our numbers have come down a bit as per the state's most recent weekly report. Um we are now in the yellow category for COVID. Um we continue to report on a weekly basis, reporting all of the information that we have on hand. Uh but people are looking for more specific data sets, uh historic figures. They are invited to view the mass um recording dashboard. That's really kind of the the main location for all of that information and links to that website are posted on social media and on the town's website.
Thanks, Liz. Uh John Wilhamsen? Any updates from you, please?
Sure. Um so we uh two weeks ago, when you were holding your last selectman's meeting, we had a school committee meeting. Um there was a fair amount of interest expressed during that meeting for us to um get more students back in the classroom, which of course is something that um I think the school committee, teachers, principal, parents all agree that is is better for the for the kids. So that said, um you know, we have certain protocols that have been put in place, including six foot social distancing along following CDC guidelines, um masking protocols and so on and so forth. Um to date, you know, we have not gone um remote and whole remote at all during the school year. We have been in in session with our hybrid learning model since uh September sixteenth. Um and so that you know, we think we've had some good successes there. Um that said, uh you know, on the horizon, we do have um you know, teachers and elementary school staff and I guess up to K through twelve uh on a step of phase two, the third, I think the third tier of phase two for vaccine um distribution. So with with that on the horizon, I think it's definitely time for us to take a look at um what other measures or what other plans we could put in place with that being a mitigating factor. And perhaps that gives us some flexibility with respect to the CDC guidance at six feet. Um and hopefully if if, you know, we can get that done in a, you know, relatively um you know, short period of time, though it's all dependent upon uh vaccine availability and being able to do that distribution. That we would have some opportunities to get students back in uh the four days a week or perhaps even full time. Um you know, there's been meetings since the last school committee meeting. Um we have a health and safety meeting tomorrow night. Um we'll be talking with teachers, uh school nurse and with uh Mr. Venido as well to talk about some of the various ideas and some of the planning. Um you know, some of the challenges that we will be facing. Um you know, assuming that we can get staff uh vaccinated for all that want to be vaccinated. Um there's still a lot of logistical issues to make sure we have enough people to to teach both uh in person and those students that uh need to or have chosen to be fully remote. Uh we also will have issues in dealing with how we uh enable them to be able to do school lunch. We're doing right now about half the school. Is be able to have lunch because in lunch, you cannot reduce below the six feet. Um that per per any of the guidance. So you need to either be able to have more space to put students in for lunch or have them have lunch in the classrooms for certain classes, which means that you need more people in order to be able to observe them doing lunch. Uh or be able to be there for lunchtime. And then we also have busing issues that we only have limited bus capacity. So these are all things that we'll have to have to figure out. And I'm sure there's others that we haven't even thought of yet. But I think that's part of the process now that we have to go through and figure out how can we do this in a safe and an effective manner, both for um the students, but also for the the teachers and the other staff at the Denit. Because one of the challenges that we have is that if we do end up spreading uh COVID within the school. Um we could very quickly go end up fully remote because we do not have staff to be able to staff the school. Uh it's not gonna take more than a few people being out uh to the point that we would be have be really challenged to be able to have substitutes come in. Um because there's also been a lot of difficulty um uh during this whole year of being able to get substitutes. And they're needed in multiple schools because again, you're also encouraging staff, if they don't feel well, they need to stay home, even if it's just a common cold. You don't want to take that chance that they come in in that way. So you sort of have everything sort of compounds to make things uh less easy than normal, shall we say. So um we are working on that and um you know, we'll see how the discussions go um uh this week. Uh and you know, I'm sure this will be, this will obviously be a topic of discussion at the next school committee meeting in two weeks. Additionally, we we are hosting or I'm hosting with Mr. Venido a parent information session on Thursday to just provide an update directly to parents that are interested and give them the opportunity to ask additional questions. Um so that's that's that. Do you folks have questions for me?
Is the uh the Zoom meeting connection link, is that out on the web, John?
It's out on the Denit uh the Denit page.
Okay, thank you.
Um I I I'll just acknowledge the incredible challenge of balancing the needs and the wishes of numerous variant and disparate stakeholders and groups. And uh you're surely in the midst of uh kind of a crossfire from a lot of different directions and we're glad you're still standing.
For, for the moment. And, and one of the other challenges, you know, that we're, that I think is, is, is out there is just that, you know, there, you know, a lot of good reporting out there about what's going on in other school districts. The challenge there, of course, is that pretty much every instance, all of the complications that I was sort of talking about that are unique to Denit, they have unique complications in each of these other school districts and each of these schools, which doesn't always make it into the, you know, article that's so long in the paper. So when you start peeling the layers of some of these things, it sounds like things are changing dramatically town to town. And really behind the scenes, you have, you know, talented administrators, teachers, and, and school committee members trying to figure out how to, you know, build a better mousetrap, and bumping up against lots of, of challenges. My guess is, is we will do the same. Kingston's holding their, their elementary school committee meeting tonight, and they're talking through this right now. In fact, when I'm done here, I'm going to jump over there and see if, if they're still chatting about it. So there's, you know, there's a lot out there, and, you know, if, if, if parents are watching here, just please know that we are, we are, you know, we, we are looking at how we can do this and do it in the right way so that we're successful. Because one of the biggest things that I worry about is us rushing at something, and then going into a cycle of full remote, back in session, full remote. To me, I think that is going to be much more detrimental to the students and to the parents that are trying to plan around this, to have kids out for two weeks at home, and then back in for a couple weeks and two weeks at home. We don't want to get into that at all. You know, if, I think we would definitely be successful if we make it to the end of the year without ever having to go fully remote. That would be amazing. I don't think most of us thought we were going to make it through Halloween. But we did, and thanks to the way that the, the people are in town have been dealing with it, and that's all great, too. The other thing, and I'll just note this, and then we can move off, is that I, I think there's also an argument to be made that it would be really good for the Denit to be able to spend at least part, at least part of the rest of this year doing full in-person safely, in order to be able to understand what we're going to have to do in the fall. Because at this point, I don't see that the fall is going to be much different than where we are. If you have the staff vaccinated, it's going to be much different than where we might be in April and May. And it would be really good to be able to have a test run of that, to know what we need to improve. Work on that over the summer, rather than just trying to figure out what we need to do for September 1. Because the students won't be vaccinated. So, you know, that, we're going to be pretty much in the same bucket here. So if we can, if we can do that, we can get kids back into school more, and we can have that opportunity to learn and improve. That would be the ideal. So lot, lot to do still, but we're working on it.
Thank you, John. Any comments? So we'll go on to correspondence. Anything in correspondence, Liz?
You're muted, Liz.
There we go. Yes. We have a request for use of town property. Forgive me, I have multiple screens open at once. This is from Daisy Girl Scout Troop 70837, based in Plimpton. And they are looking to work on the garden beds at the library throughout spring, summer, and fall of this year. The work would be taking place after school, on weekends, and it involves cleaning, planting, and maintaining the garden beds. They did note that they will be outdoors the whole time, and they will adhere to all of the required safety protocols, as far as limits on the number of people, wearing face coverings, and still ensuring social distancing, even though they will be outdoors.
So that's a request for use of town land?
Yes.
All right. So I make a motion that that request be accepted or agreed to.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
Love to see it going.
Yeah, and we're real appreciative, absolutely. So a vote would be Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
All right. Now, Mr. Russo, yes. All right. More correspondence, Liz?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. That brings us to minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. Actually, before those, I just want to thank John Trainer, who had a lot of minutes duties in the last week or so, and he's pumped out some really excellent work. And these are great minutes. These are showcase things. So thank you very much, John.
You'll get my bill.
I bet. So we have open session from January 25, and then open session from February 5. I had nothing on January 25. I did have a question about February 5. In the last paragraph, it says, "Plumpton participants made a presentation to their host." It says outlining. I think it's supposed to say outlining.
Okay. Yep. I'll change that.
Thank you. Other than that, I thought they were great. Christine, you have?
Yeah, I thought they were excellent, too.
I have to make an amendment. Though I didn't put in the governor's introduction, which Christine pointed out to me. So that will be part of the amendment.
Perfect.
Wow, she caught that one. Good for you.
She did. Good thing.
All right. So I'll make a motion, both these minutes be accepted with the editing that have, has been commented on. Second, please?
I'll second.
Roll call. Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo? Yes. So our next meeting is February 22. Do we have a guest on board yet? Is that Paze coming then?
I think it was supposed to be.
We also have a call for the cannabis business.
What, what was that again, Liz?
The cannabis business. Those people are coming, I think, to give a little explanation.
I thought they elected to go to another town.
No, I think you're thinking of the brewery, the brew pub.
No, there was an email that said they were looking at other towns. I guess, I'm sorry, that's probably what.
Yeah. So I think they wanted to come and talk to the board. I didn't really want to play middleman on that. I thought it was best to have them come to a meeting and present all of the information publicly, so that we could figure out how to best move forward. And likewise, I think we'll need to get some info from town council, if they were any interested in moving forward as far as how to put together a host agreement.
Makes sense.
And just to be clear, if anyone hearing this, this is apparently a group that has some interest in a grow facility, I, I believe, in the industrial park, which is a somewhat different take on when we explored a different grow facility several years ago, and was really quite controversial. So we're glad to listen and hear. And Liz, you'll be checking, at least to get maybe some overview from town council on, on what a, a host agreement might look like, or what's involved?
I was going to look into that, and also just find out if they would have any suggestions for the meeting on the 22nd, by way of questions we should be asking, or, or anything like that. But.
Just, just to stress how preliminary this is, and just an opportunity to hear what they have to say. We know they're looking at several towns, and we'll see how it goes.
And this time around, it's legalized. Marijuana has been legalized, so.
This was a challenge last time.
Right.
We'll see. Okay, I think we're up to rants and raves.
Mark, one thing. Liz, it may be worth double-checking with Paze, because that is the same night as the school committee meeting. So there may be.
I hadn't reached out to Paze. I don't know, was I asked to reach out, or was?
I thought Bree.
I did.
Okay.
I reached out to Amy twice. I gifted another one before, right before this meeting, and asked her again if she was interested. I have not heard back from Amy.
I wonder if we should maybe do them for one of the March meetings, just where they're going to have a conflict likely with meetings anyway, and do this other thing on the 22nd.
I think that'd be good. So the next one would be March 8. Maybe, Bree, could you pursue that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Rant and rave.
Okay, I'll go first. All right. So I've got two raves. And my first rave is John, Mark, and Liz getting together with Senator Brady and Representative Lonatra. And John, you in particular, organizing this meeting to advocate for the town and to be proactive. Oh, there's my little snippy little dog. To be proactive in looking at ways to help us meet the town's needs. So great, that was great to do that. And, you know, kudos. I wish that I would have been able to attend. I'm sure that a lot of good is going to come out of that. So that was excellent work. And then I wanted to, my second one is Bree and Chief Silva. And this had to do with the water at the, the highway. And, you know, it's just when things like this happen, we don't really have a facilities manager, and, you know, where do you go? What should we be doing here? And Steve really stepped in and, and laid out a plan for us, made calls, got the remediation people here to do what needed to be done. And then Bree, who does the paperwork and, you know, crosses the, the Ts and dots the Is, so that the town gets reimbursed and that things are, are handled appropriately. So thank you to, to all of you.
So I have a rant. Being one of the Phase Two COVID people, over 75, I have never seen a, a, a website problem like the state has created. I thought after Mass Health Care, where they had all the problems with that rollout, that they would have thought about COVID. And unfortunately, it's, it's just a nightmare. You go into it, you, for instance, we tried to sign up with the Marshfield Drive-In. You fill out all the forms, and then you get to the end, and it says there's no openings. So then you go to another day. You fill out all the forms over again, get to the end, get to the date, there's no openings. So common sense would dictate, you would tell people that there's no openings ahead of time, so that they could only work on the days when they fill out the form. So I think the state, and I think Governor Baker is going to lose a lot of, a lot of marks for this, and it's unfortunate. It should have been done better. Hopefully, I'm worried about the people, the Council on Aging people, the seniors. I did listen in to part of the conversation they had today. And we have a number of people who don't have computers. You know, this is really turning out to be a major problem. They're scared. So I will say the Council on Aging, and especially the fire people, Captain Cheryl offered to go and make out the papers for anybody that needed them. So a rave for her, a rave for Steve Silva, our fire chief. But it is a major issue at the state level. And I'm sure you all know this from TV.
So my rave is for a mentor. This has come up in, in, in part with the town accountant resignation and town treasurer retiring, and I have considered both of them mentors along the way. But for one reason or another, I've been spending a fair amount of time over Churchill Park and Cato's Ridge. And as one enters Churchill Park or gets to the boardwalk, there's a bench there dedicated to Gail Briggs. And had we had the opportunity to actually name either of those parks after someone, it would have been Gail. And Gail was, passed away before all of her work over decades, and her foresight over decades came to fruition. But that bench is a wonderful place to sit at the beginning of the boardwalk and see what she created, and remember how her foresight and energy brought for something so beautiful. So thinking of you, Gail, and really appreciative. Okay. I think we're ready to adjourn, and we'll do this again in two weeks, I guess.
Mark?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. I've, I've been in the shadows here. I, I have a couple of raves that I, well, one rant and one rave. John, I agree with you. From a border health perspective, the government, the state government, and the federal government have known that a back, a vaccine was coming at some point. And they should have had this all planned out and ready to go, to flip the switch as soon as the vaccine came. It's appalling. And from a border health perspective, the information that we get, which I consider pretty real time, it, it, it's just appalling. That's what, what's going on now. And it, it's shameful. And I'll leave it at that. That's, that's my rant. My rave is to the Highway Department with this last messy storm here, and knowing that they're down 50% in personnel. And I think our roads were, were, they started on them before any of the surrounding communities did. And they did a terrific job. It's people stepping up to the plate and then really, really doing a fantastic job, you know, when, when their backs are against the wall. And, and that's my rave for the Highway Department. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Wow, we're kind of expanding.
Our roads were really good.
Anyone else want to go into a rave?
I would like to just.
Our roads were fabulous.
I would like to note that in my time starting out with the town, and over these last three and a half years, both Barbara Gomez and Colleen Moran have been incredibly helpful and kind to me, and really, you know, opened up the books and went over everything with me. And their expertise and kindness over the last few years is very much appreciated, and both of them will be very much missed.
Well said. Nice way to end. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo? Please, everyone, yes, everyone, please stay well. We'll see you in a couple weeks.